Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three at ten thirty a.m. The ten thirty a.m. is when they start the planning department items. So it may not be exactly at ten thirty that an item would come up. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. They're in the back if you so desire. An applicant does not have to fill one out to speak. Thank you. Roll call. Jerry, everybody's here today and present. We do have two individuals that are going to be on Zoom for items, and I'll stick them at the start of each item so that you can make yourself aware of it and who the individual is. Approval of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Have you had a chance to go through those in your packet? And if you had, the Chair would address a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three minutes of Planning Commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes, that's the special hearing for the vacation home rental. Did you have a chance to look at that material that was in your packet? Any corrections, clerical? That's everything? If not, the Chair would address a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes of the Planning Commission, which was a special hearing for the vacation home rental discussion. Hearing none, all signify by saying aye for approval. I got that wrong. Anyway, those opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Again, go ahead.
Move to approve the agenda.
Target. Move to approve the agenda in second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Thank you, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU ten zero four for Deep Creek Outfitters. Matt Eisenbrow is the agent to review a home occupation, a gunsmithing business, and an agriculture district, and staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU ten zero four to the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to obtain a building permit. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU twelve twenty-eight for Albert and Rita Chapman to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit twelve twenty-eight with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU twelve twenty-nine for Albert and Rita Chapman to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU twelve twenty-nine with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU fifteen twenty-nine for Jim or Mary Skull to review a cabin to be used as a ranch and residence in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU fifteen twenty-nine with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit review CU twenty-one seventy-one for Greg Helgason to review living in a twelve-by-fifty-six trailer while building living quarters in an existing shop building in an agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU twenty-one seventy-one to the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to obtain a building permit. And finally, item number nine is conditional use permit review CU twelve forty-eight or twenty-two forty-eight for Argyle Properties LLC and Nita Lee to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU twenty-two forty-eight with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Any clerical errors, anyone's noted in any of the consent items? Would the staff desire to have any pulled?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Commission, anyone would like to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? In the audience, by the consent calendar, we passed all of these items, number four through number nine, by one vote for approval, per the staff's recommendation. If you desire to have any of those pulled, it'd be proper to do so at this time. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent calendar, items four through nine, as per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number ten.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number ten, conditional use permit CU twenty-three oh six to allow an illuminated on-premise sign within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit on the subject property. The applicant is a Church of Christ, Tim Renfro. He is actually here in the audience. Oh, sorry. If you have any questions for him. The location is one-three-six-four-five South Highway sixteen. The lot size is two-point-oh-seven acres. Current zoning is Highway Service District. The existing land use is church, and there's no existing flood hazard on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permit applications. They are as follows. One, no. And they're up on the board, actually. The requested use should not be detrimental in danger to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, no. The requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, no. Allowing the existing on-premise sign to be illuminated should not affect the normal, orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes. Access is provided via an existing approach on South Highway sixteen. All utilities are in place. Number five, yes. An existing approach provides egress on the property. Number six, yes. The requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of the district in which it's located with an approved conditional use permit. Number seven, yes. The future land use is identified as Highway Service District, and illuminated on-premise sign is allowed use with an approved conditional use permit. Interdepartmental review. The request was routed to County Highway Department, the County Planning, County Ordinance Enforcement, and Black Hills Electrical Corporation. No concerns or objections were received. Analysis. On November first, two thousand and twenty-two, the staff formed a site visit to the property. The applicant is proposing to replace the existing message panel with a borderless, double-sided outdoor LED sign. A conditional use permit is required to allow an illuminated sign within fifteen hundred feet of residential zoning district or dwelling unit. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-three oh six with these conditions.
Thank you, Christine. Questions for Christine? I have one. I assume they can't use their changeable copy sign anymore, and I've always enjoyed their biblical messages on them, so drive it by. They're good ones, though. I thought I was watching Young Shelton all the time. Okay, thank you, Christine. Would the applicant like to speak? Thank you. Chair to address a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve CU twenty-three dash oh six, per staff's recommendation, I believe with six conditions. Correct. Discussion. Discussion from the public or the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eleven.
Item eleven is conditional use permit CU twenty-three oh four for Robert and Colby Reese. We heard this at the last meeting. They are requesting to allow an RV on the subject property while building a single-family residence. I don't have my packet, so I'm not going to go through all the details at the moment. It is a forty-acre piece of land that's empty at the moment. There's no structures or anything. The roads are in the process of being built, so this aerial is an older one. Last meeting, there was questions by Pat Hall as to when they were going to build. He is the previous landowner, and he helped in writing the covenants, which require a building permit prior to be able to live in the RV. They have come to an agreement that they will get a building permit and start building the homes prior to living in the RV. They will be installing a septic system before they start living in the RV as well. There's, they came to the agreement, and there's conditions in there that reflect that agreement. Questions?
Questions for Kelsey? Number five and six then were revised to fit the results of those meetings from Mr. Hall and the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for Kelsey? Is your applicant here?
No, they're in Arizona.
Okay.
Yep.
Discussion on anything? Would the Commission prefer to do a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve CU twenty-three dash zero four, per staff's recommendation, with fifteen conditions. Discussion. Discussion from the audience, for the public. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twelve.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item twelve is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero one. It's to amend the comprehensive plan and change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant is Jamie Gerlock, and the landowner. The location of the property is one-zero-five-three-five Sheridan Lake Road. It involves eleven-point-six-nine acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use residential. Access is off Sheridan Lake Road, and there's no special foothills area on the property. A little comparison for Pennington County zoning designations. Current zoning is agriculture, which requires a ten-acre lot size. Future land use is rural residential, which requires a three-acre lot size, and the proposed zoning is low-density residential, which allows down to a half acre. Maximum single-family residence per density, so future land use for rural residential is point-three-three. The proposed zoning is two. Set max for rural residential are twenty-five feet from all property lines. For the proposed zoning designation change, it's twenty-five from the front and the rear and from the sides. Predominant land use for both rural residential and low-density residential is residential, and they both involve private and public utilities. Current zoning within one-half mile to the north, you have agriculture, open space, and rural residential. To the south, you have agriculture and open space. To the east, you have agriculture and open space, and to the west, you have rural residential, agriculture, open space, and planning and development. Future land use within one-half mile, which is your, the picture on the right, you have open space, rural residential to the north. To the south, you have rural residential and open space. To the east, you have open space and rural residential. And to the west, you have open space, planning and development, and rural residential. Existing land use is within one-half mile in all directions are agriculture and residential. Access is taken off Sheridan Lake Road, which is a twenty-four-foot-wide paved road with shoulders and an approximate eighty-seven-foot public right-of-way. The lots would be served by public water and sewer. This was routed out for an apartment review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. Highway did come back, though, and said that any houses placed on the additional lots would need to not impede the drainage, the natural drainage in the area, which is part of our zoning ordinance as well. The applicants are proposing to subdivide into five lots. Layout plan LPL twenty-three dash zero three was approved by the Planning Department. Rezone twenty-three dash zero one to rezone from agriculture district to low-density residential district is on the next agenda item. Low-density residential denotes areas of semi-rural uses, single-family residence with some agricultural uses. There are approximately thirty-two lots within a half-mile that are under three acres, and the subdivision on Rockwood Road across, there's approximately eleven acres in there, all of which are under two acres. So the proposed acreage of the plat, of the proposed lots, appear to be in harmony with the existing land uses and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure, and the majority of the properties within a half-mile are large lot residential, which, and meet the, are in harmony with what they're proposing. So with that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero one.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Cody, the designation that you're changing to the low-density rural residential district, you said that was half-acre lots. So this plan that they're showing, all of those lots could be divided in half again?
Potentially. When you, when you look at the drainage in the area, I don't know if they really would be able to. Highway isn't going to grant any more approaches. And once you start getting into more lots, you have to increase your access easement width, so you're really going to cut down on the actual buildable area of what you can put there. They're pretty much going to have to put an access easement across that front line, so I don't know if they'd be able to actually subdivide down any farther. The six-acre parcel, that's, that's a different story.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Kim.
Just curiosity, lot number two is that odd-shaped one, is that to protect the drainage, or is there a well up there? What?
I think it's just the natural layout of the land, and Brittany may know more.
I know the applicant, and I've spoken to the applicant. It's access to the Forest Service, and that's that weird shape, and they actually have horses, and they take their horses and they ride through that area, so that's how they access the Forest Service. And there's a deep kind of ravine through there, so it's not really buildable through there, so.
And then another question. As you go down Sheridan Lake Road, there's potentially a lot of land that could be developed, and if all of these are having driveways out onto Sheridan Lake Road, that could be a real mess? I'm just saying.
Yeah, so Highway isn't granting any more approaches. They have an approach to proposed Lot Five, and there's approaches for Lot One and Lot Two. Lot Three and Four will either have to take access off of an easement through Lot Two or from the approach on Lot Five. The Highway Department's not granting any more approaches in that area.
Thank you.
I think you basically, in other words, the approaches that are approved meet the county guidelines now for access to these properties, and there will be no more granted, and most of it's because of the distance, I'm sure.
Correct. That, and from my understanding, you know, Sheridan Lake Road was also just redone, and those approaches were, when they, when Highway got the land, or the approaches that were existing, they kind of planned for those. They didn't plan for any additional ones from there.
They were pre-engineered into the road improvement.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else for Cody? Does your applicant want to speak?
They're actually, unfortunately, out of town. They were supposed to be heard at the meeting two weeks ago, but with some stuff, it got continued. I will say, their only comment was that if it looked like the Planning Commission was going to recommend denial, that they'd want it continued for two weeks so they could be here. They had a trip planned.
Anyone from the audience came to speak on this one? I didn't see a speaker request. Okay.
I didn't, uh, this works.
Sure, you come up and introduce yourself, just for the record, and go ahead and ask any questions, speak whatever you would like. Go ahead.
Hi there, I'm Kevin Eisenhower. I live across, right across the street from this, and within the packet of information that I received, nowhere did it indicate Lot One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. It just showed like, I think, the first slide, which was just the exterior outline of this. And being that we've had construction over the last three years there, and if you take a look at that south portion, if you're going to add another three lots in there, I mean, those cars are going fifty miles an hour around that bend, and I can't see putting in extra lots in that area. And like I said, I didn't know how many lots this was going to be broken into, so that's my major concern. And then the, I think you said, everything was on public water in sewer? Is that correct? Or is it on well?
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, it's private water and sewer.
Right. Septic and wells.
So it is well. So I'm on a well adjacent, I mean, across the street, so that's another one of my concerns, because there's only me and one other person in this entire area off to the west. And then I now take a look at the lot size, and I'm greatly concerned about that, because the majority of the lots are, I think, two-and-a-half to four acres on the west side and north. On the south side of us is a different nature way, and I don't know what the lot sizes are. So this is all new information to me. Like I said, I didn't get a copy of this and kind of just shooting from the hip at this point. So how do I get a copy of this to show all the other residents in the area that this is what they're planning on doing?
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, so they could do a records request for the layout plan, and then that would be included in that record.
But my question is, how do I do that?
The layout plan? Go ahead, Cody.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, so there's really actually two options. You can come up to our office, fill out a records request form, or this part of their packet for this, for these two items, that's included in there, so you can go to our website and go to, go under Planning Commission, and it'd be under there as well.
Anybody have an objection? If I just take a picture of this?
It's online, too, in our packets.
I was going to say, it's under an LPL. If you want to write this number down, LPL twenty-three dash oh three for the layout plan.
I'm sorry.
LPL twenty-three dash oh three is the layout plan.
Three, and what website would I go to? Uh, so actually, I'd just recommend that after these items, just go up to our Planning Department, and they'll print it out. Just if you go back up the stairs, go past the sheriff, we're first on the left. Oh, okay. So someone up there will be able to print it off for you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Eisenhower a couple of questions. I understand the water issue being a concern. When you talked about lots three, four, and five that you saw up here on the map, would your concern be there if there was just approaches there or just buildings there?
Both, in my opinion. I mean, I bought that land over two-and-a-half years ago, like I said, which is right across the street, and after what I've seen in the last couple of years with Oftedall and their construction raising the road like twenty foot, cutting off my entire view, and now you're going to put lots to my left and then three of them to the right? I mean, my view is becoming pretty restricted, that's me personally.
Okay, okay.
But there's also driving access, which, if you take a look at that road, the speed limit's fifty miles an hour, and I don't see lots three, four, and five. You're just looking for an accident to happen there.
Okay. I don't know, you maybe didn't hear it, but they're not, there wouldn't be access from Sheridan Lake Road to those lots. It'd have to be interior access to those, if I understood that correctly?
So Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, so there is an approved approach on Lot Five, but there's not an approved approach for lots three and four, and Highway will not grant them another approach. So they'll either have to do an access easement off of that Lot Five approach or off of the Lot Two approach and come down to access lots of the area.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified for you, so that you understood where approaches were allowed or not.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Just to make it clear, two and five are the available approaches when you get your drawing as far as the neighbors.
Yeah, Lot Two, there's already existing buildings in it.
Correct.
I mean, that's pretty much what I steer at on my patio, so there's nothing else on Lot.
You're off that Rockwood Road, or are you there?
I'm actually on Sawmill, which Rockwood, Sawmill is...
Just the, yeah.
Yeah, actually, I don't know if it's drawn to scale. It looks like Rockwood should be a little south. Sawmill is a little north. There you go. So I'm in that house. See where the building is in the proposed area, the existing structures? I'm in the house just to the left.
Okay.
Just a quick, how far out of town is this?
Um, I believe it's about seven miles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
So Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, so to answer that question, that northern portion, like lots one and partial of two, is in the through-mile plating jurisdiction for the city of Rapid City. So they have to platter through the city of Rapid City as well.
Okay.
Okay. Cody? The line there is still within their jurisdiction.
Correct. If, the, it cuts through like right in here, I believe, for the through-mile plating jurisdiction.
All right.
I can pull it up if you guys want to see it.
Mr. Chair, when was this zoning effective? I can't, it doesn't come up on my, it looks like six sixteen of two-something, what, that on Rockwood? Because those houses are older than something in two thousand. Did they get just named low-density just because they were smaller lots?
I, I'd have to look into it.
While you're doing that, just to weigh in here, I gathered that it was agriculture and that our future land use sits the low, sits the rural, and then we're going, they want to go to low. Is that, am I correct?
Yes, so current zoning is agriculture. Future land use is rural residential. They'd like to go down to low-density residential. So it says that it's effective six sixteen twenty-one. I believe those lots were platted.
So those were, when our comprehensive plan got updated, those were already low-density residential, so they've been low-density residential for quite some time.
Okay, that makes more sense, because I know that they were, those are older homes in there before.
Right, so the old low-density residential is the new rural residential, so it's always been this rural residential type zoning for those even prior to this, so they're older, yes. It isn't a recent, it is, isn't a recent zoning designation.
Okay, but there, again, those are, could be less than three-acre lots, and they all are, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to weigh in, Kevin, my memory, when, sometime back, and you might remember too, was Dean Development on the PUC, and those, the other one was already, I believe, zoned when Dean Development got the PUC. So that's, that's all the way back to, what, around twelve, ten, that that started? That's quite a few years ago. Just from my recall, yeah, I remember that they were there before. They were laid out long, when the Sawmill was still in there. Anything else for Cody? Anything else for Cody? Well, we got him up here. Anyone else from the audience wanna speak on this matter before we move forward? Chair, take the recommendation or motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm typically not excited about moving down to a different zoning that's two down, but this one is not, since those are all in the smaller lot sizes. So I moved to approve CA, whatever that is, 23-01.
Yes, 23-01.
Second?
Moved in second to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 23-01 per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just, I have only one reservation that's relative to the availability of the, of the water, since the others are apparently operating on, on wells. But this would have to be a well again, apparently, so just erring a concern.
Yeah, what you're saying is there's gonna be four more wells on that side of the road?
Yep.
In short order, on one acre lot?
Yep.
Okay. That's certainly something to consider.
Yep.
I'm with Kevin. It is refreshing to see that they laid them out as one acre or more. So on that part, I agree with Kevin. It's not normal that when you're dropping down two categories that you see it laid out. And I, I see with the access and whatnot, I doubt whether these can be developed as half and get the access. I don't think there's sufficient room there to do it. But that's just a guess. You're looking over your thumb when you're doing these things. Thank you though, Gary, for adding that in, because the wells are becoming more and more an issue when we look at changing these zonings and changing the plan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Did you get that, Gary? Thank you. And item number 13.
Cody Sack, Urban Planner Planner, item 13 is rezone RZ 23-01. It is to rezone 11.69 acres from Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. Again, the applicant and landowner is Jamie Gerlock. Location of the property is 10535 Sheraton Lake Road. Current zoning is Agriculture District with an existing land use residential. Access is off Sheraton Lake Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. I don't know if you want, do you want me to go through all of this information again? It's the same as the previous.
I don't think we need that. I'm surprised Mike didn't get in there and combine these two.
Get two together?
Yeah.
So...
We're getting spoiled, aren't we, Mike? Thank you. Go ahead, Cody.
Uh, so with that, then staff would recommend approval of the rezone RZ 23-01, as the comprehensive plan amendment was just recommended for approval as well.
Okay.
I move we approve RZ 23-01.
Second.
Moved in second to approve RZ 23-01. Just for the record, make sure everyone understands, you're approving it for zoning of low-density residential. Is that correct? Just wanted to get that on record. We flew by that, and we're approving this without ever saying what we're moving it to. Anything else like that? Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And item number 14.
Item 14 is rezone RZ 23-02. It's to rezone 0.94 acres from Agriculture District to Rural Residential District. The applicant and landowner is Marjorie Helgisson, trustee, the surveyor and agent of Davis Engineering Incorporated. Location is 23565 Burgess Road. Involves 0.494 acres. Current zoning is Agriculture District, and existing land use is residential. Access is off Burgess Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, future land use for the portion that is being rezoned is rural residential, and that is what the applicant is proposing. So rural residential allows a three-acre lot size, the maximum single-family residence density of 0.33, 25-foot setbacks from all property lines, predominant land use residential and private wa, water and wastewater. Surrounding zoning, within a half mile, you have agriculture and rural residential to the north. Agriculture, rural residential, open space to the south. To the east, you have agricultural, rural residential, and open space. To the west, you have agricultural, rural residential, open space. Uh, future land use to the north is rural residential, open space. South, rural residential, open space. East, rural residential, and open space. And to the west, you have ranchette, rural residential, and open space. Um, predominant land use is within a half mile are agricultural and residential. And the property is accessed by Burgess Road, which is a 16-foot wide gravel road and a 50-foot wide private access easement. And then there's also a 10-foot wide gravel road as well. Infrastructure would be private water and sewer. This was routed on for your part in review. There were no major objections or concerns received. Um, so the applicant is incorporating a small section on the property into this lot. They're currently going through a layout plan, LPL 23-05. Uh, basically, what they're doing is, this little piece that we're rezoning today is gonna go into this lot, and then this piece right here is gonna go into this lot. Uh, the only way to incorporate this into here, though, is to do this rezone. Future land use is rural residential, so there's no need for a comprehensive plan amendment. Um, and it says, although the request to rezone does not appear to be in harmony with current zoning or future land use designations due to road improvement, staff still recommends approval of the, approval as infrastructure will be addressed during the planning process. Uh, so rural residential requires a 24-foot wide road. Since the road's not 24 feet wide, when they're going through the planning process, they'll either have to improve that road to 24 feet wide or get a subreg variance. Uh, so with that, staff has been recommending approval of rezone RZ 23-02.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody? All right, I've got one. The size of the piece of property we're dealing with then is the .494.
Correct.
All right. Then my next question would be, on the exhibit from Davis Engineering, there is a, a gap between the property and then the other lot, uh, two. Is that just because of drawing and trying to get the numbers in there, or?
Um, are you talking about, is, sorry, I don't have the exhibit in front of me. Is this the lot two that you're referring to?
I'm talking on the, this one.
Uh, so that little, that little gap they're referring to right here, uh, I believe is currently already a part of, is already currently in this, part of this lot as it currently sits. This was, so this...
It's currently in the lot two?
Yeah, it's, it's almost like a flagpole lot without looking like a flagpole. This is the access to Burgess Road. This is how this property accessed the road previously, was through this little, little portion.
Lot three.
Yeah, so this, this little portion already exists in this lot.
So it's, it's already a document that's recorded that it can't be, okay?
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, there wasn't any reference I could find in here.
It's currently part of that plot. It was how that lot was created.
As long as it's designated to, to be used as that, and I can understand that, access to some other lot, that would be fine with me. Any other discussion? Questions for Cody? Anyone from the audience here to speak on this matter? Chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve RZ 23-02.
Second.
Moved in second to approve RZ 23-02 per staff's recommendation. And of course, there is one additional one, the layout plot, 23-05 is being reviewed at this time by the staff. It's included in their recommendation. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And to item number 15.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, Brittany Molitor. Item 15 is Vacation of Platt, VP 22-01, to vacate lot L. Uh, the applicant is Pete Lean and Sons. The agent is Avid Fort Engineering, David Muck, and he is in the audience if you have any questions. The location of the property is 3615 Universal Drive. This essentially was a lot that was plotted over a section line right-of-way. Uh, the section line right-of-way was vacated back in the late 50s when this lot L was created. Lot L was originally created to provide access, and they no longer need that access. If you look at the aerials, you can see that it's located in this area, which is part of where the, the mining activity is for Pete Lean. So they don't need this lot anymore. It's actually creating more of a hindrance for it being there. Um, this was routed around to the interdepartmental review process, and there were no items of concern with this vacation, so staff is recommending approval with one condition.
Thank you, Brittany. Questions for Brittany? At first, I thought it was perhaps the access down to the house. I think Chuck and Barb used to live, Lean lived down, but that's on the next road down.
Yes.
When I first, I had to spin these pictures around a number of times to figure out exactly.
Yeah, cause the Deadwood Avenue and Universal Drive, this is kind of in between. So it's, this is partly, partly in the city limits and part in the county. Um, it just has to do with this area here, but they don't need this access because they have access on Universal Drive and Sturgis Road to access any of the lots that are associated with this.
Yeah. Anything else for Brittany? It's basically to clean up the property description out there, I'm sure, if nothing else.
It is, cause there's several of those lots that have the lot L and the legal description, and it's really not needed anymore. But that section line has been vacated, so just as it were.
Anyone from the audience feel that they wanna come forward and speak on this?
Not wishing you any more, but Brittany did a great job.
Okay. I'm gonna let that one fly by like I didn't hear it. Chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chair? I move to approve VP 22-01.
23-01. Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, VP 22-01, and staff's recommendation is to approve with one condition that all necessary resolutions for vacation of the plat, 23, are unrecorded by the applicant at the register. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
In our packet, it says VP 22-01, and on the agenda it says 23-01. So which is it? It's 23, 23-01.
Yeah.
That's why I said both of them.
Thank you, Karen. I even said that wrong, so I didn't catch it at all, did I? Sleeping that switch. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And to item number 16.
Item number 16 is Conditional Use Permit Amendment, CU 1509, to amend an existing conditional use permit to add two additional storage units to the subject property. The applicant and owner is Reno Gold Storage LLC, Darren Rains. The agent is Zeb Brains. Uh, the property is located at 24106 Highway 385. It's currently zoned Highway Service District, and the current land use is a storage unit facility. Um, this was continued from the last Planning Commission meeting. Um, the applicant is on Zoom. Um, if you have any questions, he wasn't present at the last meeting to answer questions.
Correct.
But with that, staff is recommending approval of this amendment with conditions.
All right, and that's what I was gonna clear up first. Darren, can you, or Zeb, I've got on the screen. I thought it was gonna be Darren on Zoom. Is it Zeb on Zoom? Can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can hear you. Hope, hopefully the weather's treating you, everyone, well over there. Uh, my father is actually listening in right now, and he can answer or help answer any questions you guys might have.
All right, we're gonna hold you to the end. I do have two speaker request forms, and then we'll request that you weigh in. Uh, first speaker request form is Frank Henderson.
Good morning, Commissioner members.
Morning.
My name is Frank Henderson. I'm one of the partners of Cross Sabers. I'm the oldest of the, hard to say, but I'm the oldest of all the partners, which means I'm the oldest of all the children. I'm here this morning, I was here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I'm here this morning to speak against approving this conditional use permit. Um, I think everyone here is aware there's a long, ongoing dispute between ourselves and the property owner regarding, and, regarding the access, and I should say dispute with the property owner. It's a, it's more than that, and I don't wanna get into all the legalities of it. But we're in the process of trying to negotiate access with this particular property owner. Um, I mentioned before, I'm a civil engineer. Uh, of all the options that we have proposed, the least expensive, the most economical solution for everyone, I mean everyone, is to come in off of the existing access, off of the 385, and come across that same road that's already there on the south side of those buildings to go over the Mickelson Trail and access the property that was, um, I'm gonna say separated when the, when the section line was abandoned. So our goal here is, is to have access into our property. I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that statement, because again, there's other legal stuff involved. But of all the solutions we put out, this is the, this is the best solution. It costs the least amount of money for anybody to put the road in across from 385 using that same corridor that's already there. Our request is, don't approve the buildings, the block, the option that makes the most sense. It makes the most sense, the cost, it's to build that road using that same access. You just don't block that option out, cause everything else gets harder after that. So that, that's our request, at least until after we can get through the negotiations that are happening and/or additional meetings with the planning zoning or with the, with the county commissioner. So that's our request. My brother John, I don't want, I don't want to steal his thunder. He's gonna get up here and speak. We don't have anything against anybody having the rights to their land. All we want is the rights to our land too. And that's what we're really seeking here, is our own rights to our own land. We see that as the best. I went out there and drove up and down this thing yesterday myself. Um, that, we see that as the best way to solve all of this stuff, to solve a way into the property that's on the, our property that's on the east side of the Mickelson Trail. That's all I have to say this morning. Unless somebody has a question of me here this morning specific.
Can you explain, are you talking about the dotted line, or are you talking about down where the two buildings are proposed?
Do you have, do you have permission to use the...
The access you feel is the, the most economical at this time?
I have a procedural question on this. Am I, am I, do you come in and plug in a laptop and actually do my own, show my own stuff in the future?
You can provide us with a jump drive, and we can upload it on here.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't want, I don't want you to be firewalled.
But this is where you're talking about the access, correct? And these are the two new, um, ones that he's proposing.
That's correct. So this works, okay. So here, here's, here's where the vaca, here's where the section line was, right? And here's, here's the access off of 385 now. And it comes here, and, and this is where the two buildings are proposed. So the, the road, the gravel road, would, we're just saying, would simply be extended off this way? We just don't want these buildings to block that, that capacity, that capability. So to answer your question, uh, you're the chair, Mr. Chair? To answer your question, Mr. Chair, we're not talking about up along the section line. We're talking about in fact, what's on the south side of the, of the property, of the buildings, I'll call it instead of the property, of the buildings, along the south side of the buildings where that existing road is, to not block that road off.
Right off of that access that's somewhat a little bit in that... Right off of that access that's somewhat a little bit in that dogleg there.
That's correct. The, the access off of three-eight-five is right there in the dogleg of three-eight-five you're referring to, sir. That's correct. Just don't want that blocked.
Frank, got a question. The two buildings that you don't want built, how much could they be shortened and still have your gravel driveway? I mean, you're not gonna wipe both of them out.
But my first statement is, is it's not that we don't want built. That's not, that's not at all. We just don't want them built out into where that driveway is.
But that's what I'm saying. How far out? In other words, what would you have? Half a building of each one of those, or just so many feet off?
Honestly, sir, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the dimensions or the, or the setbacks to be able to answer that question. I, I, I don't know all of the, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. I don't know what the setbacks are. I believe they're twenty-five foot, but I'm not, that's just because I was listening here. I believe it'd be twenty-five foot or something like that. So I don't know how much it would have to shorten to meet those setbacks if this ended up being the approved access off of three-eight-five. I apologize, I don't know that.
No, that's okay. I was just curious, because I, to me, I have been out there and looked at it, and it looks like there's still room for some buildings.
Absolutely. I, I don't disagree with that at all. There's room for building there. I don't know the dimensions of their building. All of that could be worked out. I mean, it's just a matter of doing some survey and some layout and what the, what the ordinance are for setbacks off of an easement or a right-of-way line or whatever they might be. I think they're twenty-five foot, but Kale McAbow, who's our, our engineer, he'd be better be able to answer that question. I think that's part of our purpose here, of saying, can we please postpone this so we can go through these details and work it out? That's, I think that's part of our reason for talking about this, is there's, I think there's ways to work this out, but to just charge forward and sever off one of those options is, just seems a less preferable course of action. I'm not, I think, I'm trying to choose my words very carefully here, so, okay. Any other questions? I love talking. I'm kidding.
Probably not on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, all of you. Thank you very much.
John, if you'll come up and introduce yourself, just for the record, and go ahead and.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is John Henderson. I live at two-four-zero-four-eight South Highway three-eight-five. I live on the property, my parents' property, now my family partnership's property. I think, I guess to sort of summarize it in a simpler and less talking way than my brother did, is that we don't want this, we oppose this conditional use permit based on the idea that it could possibly, it could possibly stymie some of our many, many options in this whole thing. I told you last time I was here, after the first, last commission meeting, full commission meeting, that I would have an answer. I do not have an answer. The state's attorney recommended to the full county commission to re-strike this topic from the agenda last, at their last full commission meeting because of these ongoing situations. All we're asking is that you not, and again, to the Rains family, we, we're not, we, we didn't oppose the, the last two buildings they applied for, because they didn't affect this whole conversation topics, all the different options, what we have proposed, asked for, negotiated. None of it has been resolved. Still, and I'm as sick of this as anybody could be. I'm thinking maybe I should get a recliner, a lazy boy to sit in the back of the room here, because I'm here all the time. That's a joke. Anyhow, we oppose it right now until these other options are, and that was one of the options that we gave to them, would they grant us access from their existing approach to the Mickelson Trail. With these buildings, as you see, they continually go south. So every time they go south, it's just that much less room. All we're asking is that you postpone this until it's settled by the full county commission on all these other various options. And there are many, and there are engineers, and there are lawyers, and there's time. That's all that we're asking.
Questions for John.
Mr. Chair.
The thing that concerns me, John, on this, is that if there's no end to this thing, we're kind of holding these folks hostage for doing anything.
But that's their, that's a lot of their fault.
Well, but I'm saying, this, this is, it puts us in a spot as far as how do we back off and for how long?
I don't have an answer to that.
That's what I mean. There's no light right now at the end of the tunnel unless there's something going on that we're not aware of.
Well, there's a lot going on that you're not aware of. There are legal, there are legal issues, there are engineering issues, there are option A, option B, would you do this? They say no. Would you do this? We say no. There are, there are a lot of other things going on. Things probably I shouldn't discuss with you because they're legal and engineering issues.
So we won't ask you to. All right, we'll try to stay away from asking you to. That's a fair request. Thank you. Jim?
Yes, sir. Speaking of what Michael mentioned, it seems to me you need to make them an offer they can't refuse. I mean, I don't understand why we are being held hostage because you guys can't get together. I mean, is that part of our obligation?
No, I agree with, I agree with you wholeheartedly, except being held hostage. I don't believe that's a fair way to put it. We have, and we have been negotiating with them.
But this party wants to do something, and you insist that we deny this so that they cannot do what they want to do, even though they are within their rights in doing it. And I, it seems to me this could go on indefinitely. I.
It seems that way to me as well, to be quite honest with you. But if you take, this is one of the, one of the offers that we've made to resolve this entire issue. So if you take this one off the table, I'd wholeheartedly agree with them. They have a right to use their property, but so do we. And we have lost our right to that property by being denied access. So until you, if you approve this, then that option is off the table.
But there are.
There are many, many options that we've negotiated on. They have their position on some of them, and we have ours. I don't know how else to answer this.
Well, it seems to me we have two parties that are at odds.
That's correct.
And the only way to resolve it is for you guys somehow to get together. And if the party, the other party says no, I, I don't know how you can insist that we impose some moratorium on their activity. I mean, I, I understand your situation. I mean, and I, you sound like a reasonable guy, but obviously, the two of you are not anywhere near the same wavelength, and I, I just think it's frustrating to bring this here and, and use this as a device for negotiating. I.
Well, I, I understand, and it is, it is frustrating, and I am tired of it. Everybody's tired of it. I'm sure they're tired of it, too. And but just to make it very, very clear, we have given them proposals. They have given us alternative proposals. And yes, you're correct. We have not been able to come together and come to a reasonable end to this nightmare. October tenth of twenty nineteen is when this began. The full county commission meeting on October tenth of twenty nineteen. You're tired of it? I'm tired of it.
Any other questions for John?
Could John stay up here, and Brittany come and pull up Rapid Map and show us their property? And he could explain why there's no access anyplace else.
Oh, sorry. Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. So I just called Jay Alderman, and I spoke with him about Mr., I'm sorry, you don't know your last name, Henderson's statement that the state's attorney's office said that this couldn't go forward. That is not accurate. In fact, the only time that we have ever said that it couldn't go forward is when it was regarding the northern portion of the property. The state's attorney's position is still that as long as the request does not impede the current pending petition, that there is no issue.
Kevin?
Okay. Brittany, can you come up and have him show you where the property is? It'd be on the right-hand side there?
So this.
And you can follow the.
So this is the property of, the same question right now for the CUP, and this is.
Correct.
Mr. Henderson's property is this property here. There's several, I believe there's several parcels, correct?
Yes.
That are associated with this.
So is that a creek that runs through there then on the?
That is Spring Creek.
Spring Creek, okay. And you have, it looks like you own property on the north side there that crosses Mickelson Trail?
That is correct.
And there's no access potential across that?
Physically, there is not, in the opinion of our engineers. Now we're getting in, now we're getting in the soupy water again regarding what the county commission is taking up. Jay Alderman, Megan, I'm sorry, whatever your last name is, I apologize. Yeah, just said that she talked to Jay Alderman, and he said that it's not relevant to that other part, to the south. What we're saying, because there are so many other things, negotiations going on as regard to our access to that, I call it the little half moon right in there. It's a quarter moon. It's between the creek and the Mickelson Trail. Our previous access was on the section line that was vacated. And I can't go into that much further. But having the vacation, the, the section line having been vacated, we've been negotiating with the Reno Gold Storage people, and one of the options that we gave them, one of the last options that we gave them, was to come from their existing approach perpendicular to the Mickelson Trail, which you must be, according to the game fish and parks. Our position in this is that the other access that has been proposed is not accessible. Now, where you see the creek running and on the east side of that little half moon shape, that is a, that is a cliff. That is a vertical cliff. It is, it is unbuildable. So all we're asking is that you not grant the CUP right now until we resolve the other issues through the full, the full commission of the county, the county commission. You're taking one, you're taking one of the options off the table. That's why we temporarily are saying, please don't grant the CUP right now until this other thing is resolved. And no, we don't want it to go on forever. As I said, this started in October tenth of twenty nineteen. I'm tired of it. You're tired of it. I'm sure the Rains family is tired of it. But we cannot, we just can't seem to get it resolved. Perhaps it'll end up going to court. I don't know.
I think that's.
That's all I got. Pardon me?
I think that's where it belongs. And we're not at court.
I understand that. But you, all I'm asking you is to realize, you, this commission, is to realize that you're taking one of the, one of the options off of the table. So until this is resolved, we just ask that you not take this option off of the table.
Other questions for John? Mike?
One of my thoughts on this is you've got a letter from Zeb about the tenant moving the double white off.
That, that is correct.
Until the end of April. So to a certain extent, we probably have a little time because they're not gonna do anything at that point. But then again, maybe they need to order supplies and get things going. I don't know, so.
Other questions for John? Thank you, John.
And I, I appreciate your service and your time on this matter. Like I said, I'm more tired of it than you guys are, believe me. Again, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Zeb and Darren, are you both on, or are you on on one?
We're, we're on on one computer. Can you hear me?
Yes. So who would like to speak first, or are you both going to speak, or go ahead?
I'm Darren. I'm the owner. I'm gonna go ahead and speak based on what I just heard.
You've got to introduce yourself for the record, then we can go ahead and let you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is Darren Rains. I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Zeb is my son. I didn't know, or we didn't know this was coming before the planning commission last week and didn't know it was gonna be in this detail this week, or we would have been better prepared. So I apologize for that, but we had no idea. I've been a builder for forty-some years, and what they're saying is just not accurate. I don't quite understand why, but they have their own land on the north side of the bar that they can build on that's almost identical to ours. That platform of property the bar is on was placed there dirt off the road, we believe. But both sides of the property, north and south, are the same. They apparently don't want to use their expensive road front property. They want to use ours. And they have, I showed them in drawings and their engineer. Their engineer has had no studies. They have no plans, no anything, saying they can even build in a flood plain, especially when they've had flooding issues downstream in Hill City. They have no studies. They have no, anything from S dot. S dot said they would not let them put a road where they were trying to put it last time and take our property from us. This has been going on through three landowners, and I don't understand it. I've shown where they have at least six different routes on their own properties that they can go. They can get a variance going across the Mickelson Trail. They've been going through the bar property easement that they have for probably decades. So I offered to put the road in for them. If they rent the equipment and provide the fuel and stuff, I would bulldoze road in myself on one of the, one of the areas that I've showed them. And I've got drawings of it. They've got no engineer studies. They've got nothing. They presented nothing. They just keep going on tying up our property where we can't use it. I, I don't understand it. I, I just don't understand it. Their property on the north side of the bar, plus they don't want anybody to know this, where they live up north, they have an entrance, an ingress egress to the property that I guess Mrs. Henderson lived on before she passed, that they've been using for years, where they can cut a road right down beside the Henderson Trail with little issue at all. And they keep saying, this is the easiest, this is that. They've got property you can literally walk across, walk across. This is not an isolated track in any shape and imagination, and anybody that says it is, just, you know, the full commission's been out there twice. This is just a, I don't understand why unless they have to have a back road to get in for a fire, if they develop that back in there, emergency exit or something, or they just don't want to use their own property on the north side. Their property on the north side of the bar is actually more navigable than ours. They've got dirt there to do it. They can come across the trail even pretty much straight if they want. If they had to get a slight variance to cross it, and their attorney in the last wrote, said they would only put probably one house down there anyway. So it wouldn't be a public road. It would be a private road. And we have no idea why they wouldn't use their own property, other than the, the two things that I just told you. But they own the property that I, I can't see right now, I'm blocked out. But the, the property on the north side of the bar, and also another piece about a quarter of a mile up north of there, connecting all of their properties. They have a lot more property than we do. They have no reports, no studies, no anything backing up anything they're saying. It's just conjecture. And they've been tying this property up through three different landowners. We're the third one. But we didn't buy it with any easements on it. We didn't buy it with any, anything. And we just would like to be able to develop
Questions for Darren? Go ahead, Kevin. Were you raising your hand? Oh, turn and pay. All right, don't go away, Darren. Brittany?
Okay.
Can I have you come up? I had two questions. And this would be in regards to both property owners. The building permit decides the available location for building, correct? When you review that, you decide certain parameters. They say, okay, we want to put it here, and you say, okay, as long as here is within, help me out here.
So it has to be within the conditions of the conditional use permit. Their intent is to remove this structure right here.
Correct.
And then add two more buildings, one here and one here. This is the twenty-foot road that they're required to maintain as part of their conditional use permit. So this actually would most likely be extended down to where the two new structures are going to be. But this twenty-foot access road is a requirement of their conditional use permit. I believe it is one of the conditions of approval. Let me see which one it is. Number ten, I believe. And as far as storage units, they are required to maintain enough space essentially for a fire lane.
That's what I meant, by your building permit.
So they would have to maintain, typically, it's eight to ten feet minimum as a fire lane, so they could get in between them. I think these ones are a little lighter.
Is there anything that says, for instance, I'm looking at the drawing that was submitted, is there anything that says that those two new buildings have to be in line on that same line with the other three that are already there? And I mean, can they be like the other ones? They're somewhat jig-jogged.
Right. Typically, when they submit this, this is. Right. Typically when they submit this, this is, um, you know, for basically for you guys to know where they intend, uh, when they submit the building permit. I know in the past with this conditional use permit, they have put them where they have said they were going to do them as a presentation to the planning commission. I believe that these two were in front of you not that long ago and it was approved for the amendment to put them here. They were outside of where this area was. This is the, the section line that's in question and they were placed outside of it. Their site plan showed that. Um, so those building permits were issued with that. Um, there are exterior setbacks, the twenty five feet on the exterior. Um, but internally, um, we only require them to have enough space between the buildings for a fire lane. And then they do have to maintain that twenty foot wide road.
And they're allowed under their building permit request to place them as they see fit. As long as they meet that guideline.
And the conditions of their conditional use permit. So their conditional use permit currently now only allows ten structures and they're asking to add these two to amend their.
But they're removing one.
Well, they're removing the caretaker's residence. That's a double wide.
Which is changing the building permit request for those two buildings because it was setting in the picture, it appears to be setting where it would be inhibit the location of one of the buildings.
Right. I believe that it would be difficult for this building twelve to be in with the caretaker's residence.
Okay, then my last question's for Megan. I don't often answer your question, but basically the, our planning department is presenting this information to us with the assumption, it appears, that the property owners must pull the trigger on a resolution. They've got to take care of it.
So at this point, my understanding is that the board has given the parties time to come to a private resolution. Um, if the board has to get involved, um, then at that point, things get more complicated. There is a pending petition for an isolated tract in front of the board. And as part of that, if the board decided that that property on the backside is in fact isolated, um, then the board would choose the most appropriate location for a road. Um, it's not necessarily what the applicants want. It's not necessarily what the property owners want. It's wherever the board thinks is the most appropriate location for an access road. So with that being said, it theoretically could be on the south side of the port, the property. It could also theoretically be on the north side of the property. It could also theoretically be on a completely different property than the ones that are at dispute in front of you today. Because there's a property to the north have been out here on these properties four or five times. And the property to the north where the bar is at, there's also a theoretical spot that you could put a road. So there are a lot of locations where a road could go. There's also the argument that the property on the backside is not isolated at all. So with that being said, um, the state's attorney's position on this matter and on continued development on this property has always been essentially the northern portion of the road is a potential location of a road. The southern portion of the road is also a potential location. It, there could also be a road not put on this property at all. Um, so, so long as it is not in one of the locations that have previously been identified, which the northern location has previously been identified, this is the first time I have ever heard of any of the parties in this matter speaking about the southern part of this property for putting a road. So that's brand new news to me and I've been dealing with this since 2018. Um, so with that being said, the state's attorney's position has always been that the northern portion causes issues because it's always been a location that everybody has identified as a potential place for a road. Um, on the southern portion of this property, I mean, depending on the size of those structures, it doesn't really look like it's going to impede the ability to put a road out there. I've been on and near and looked at all of these properties and most of that southern portion of that property is fairly flat. Um, so I, I, I mean, you can just kind of put a road slightly around it.
Thank you. You were much more detailed than I needed, but that's all right. And my last question is if the action on this conditional use permit does not go forward to the board of commissioners?
It does not, no.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that was part of the record and anybody watching us understood that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience want to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
You still have to reintroduce yourself for the record, Mr. Henderson.
Morning again. My name is Frank Henderson. I'm up to refute the comments made by Mr. Rains regarding the engineering. He has absolutely no idea what we're doing regards to engineering. Uh, in all due respect, you may have been building stuff for forty years. I'm, I'm a registered civil engineer in fourteen states. And I've been designing highways and roads and freeways for my whole entire life for the last fifty years. So, um, his statements about what's buildable, not buildable, what's walkable, not walkable. There is terrain in there. Uh, he talks about the access from my, my, my mother's drive. Um, there's terrain in there. It's a swamp. We require you to do unsuitable excavation of all that bad material. The rock cliff, uh, he said you can walk. I've only ever been able to ride a horse down parts of it. Other than that, you need a parachute to get off that thing down to that, that land down below. So, uh, I dispute what he said about engineering. Um, and I'm sure that will come up before some other points somewhere down the line. But we're doing our own engineering and cross sections and survey and expending a lot of money doing this too. So in all due respect, I disagree with Mr. Rains regarding what we are or not doing regarding engineering and how roads can be designed and or built. So that, that was my statement. Um, we're working on this and we're working on, again, I'll say, from an engineering and construction perspective, the least, the least expensive way to get from three eighty-five, and I will use the term isolated tract, though I know that's a dispute according to statutes, is that, is that roadway along? That's all we're asking. All we're asking is to not block that option off of, off of our, off of all the things that are going on. Um, and then I, I would say this, once again, um, we're here today prepared to talk about this issue. Um, every, there's been the last county commission meeting where it was supposed to come up. The reason this, the reason we're here, this came up two weeks ago. It got postponed because there was supposed to be a, a, um, agenda item at county, at the county commission, okay? Mr. Rains' party was not able to be there, so it got postponed again. So we, the, the whole time delay stuff is just as much a part of their, their, their party to them as it is to us or anyone else. So, um, and I, I just, I feel that it's important to know that we're trying to make this work and there is a lot of conversation going on. And I will say one more thing. The, the part about accessing through the bar, okay? For if you go all the way back in time, that was a zoo. Not very many people remember that, but that was the old Hill City Zoo originally. And, um, Swede got attacked by the mountain lion there, okay? So I've been living out there since I was a kid at nine years old and never once could we drive across that property to get back to this half moon shape. We didn't, we've never done that. I don't know where he comes from saying that. There's a driveway there, but it's how he owns the bar. They used that driveway to go back down in there because they have campsites back down there and they have events and all kinds of stuff down there. It's not, it's not an access for Hendersons. It's an access belongs, that belongs solely to that bar. So that's absolutely not correct that we use that road to get back down there. I also find it interesting that they're building a road that goes right back to the access point. The, the section line when it met into the Mickelson Trail. They have, they, they, they got a dirt road now that's constructed that comes right back up in here, right to this point, right where we'd like to get through, where we could cross our land, where we've always crossed before, to cross the Mickelson Trail to get into this property. There's gates here. I, I remember building the gates as a kid, putting those gates into the, uh, the fence so we could come off the railroad tracks and cross into there. We always drove in before Highway three eighty-five got rebuilt. We came in off of Highway three eighty-five and drove along here and crossed, bumped up over the railroad tracks because they didn't have, there were railroad tracks, bumped up over to get back into this property. That's how we always came in. When they rebuilt three eighty-five and make it, the, the highway construction basically changed the alignments of the road. So the, the idea that we came in off of this old zoo property to get back in there, that's, that's not accurate. And as far as engineering is concerned, we're doing our own engineer. Like I say, we're working with the local engineers, registered engineer in the state. He's been here a lot of times before. Um, and that's who we're working with to, to put together our engineering stuff. And that's all I wanted to refuse is to make sure that you all know that we are doing our own engineering and, and due diligence. Any other questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Henderson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, at, at this point, we're being asked to make a decision.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
I'd like to get a motion on the table and then open it for discussion, please.
I would move approval.
Can I make a comment again?
Sure. We're going to open it for discussion so that then we can discuss which way we're going to go. We're, we were actually doing some discussion, uh, Darren, uh, that we really should have included with the motion. Follow me. We're getting to that point.
Okay, I just wanted to, to address some of the things.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Go ahead, Darren.
Okay, it, it, I'm, it's Darren Rains again speaking.
Yes.
Some of these things he's saying are just not accurate. Uh, we didn't move the meeting last time because of us. Our engineer went to work for the state and he was not able to be there, so we have another engineer. Their engineer in three, four years has never produced anything stating a road to be put in, not put in anything. They've never done anything except conjecture. So all this talk is just talk. In that amount of time, you think an engineer would produce something? Nobody, even their own engineer, said it is not an isolated track. A road can be put in. And what they're talking about the least expensive, they're talking about the least expensive to them. Not thinking about what it's doing to our building design. We're going to have a secure gate in that facility. They're having more break in, break ins in the area like they did at the campground down the road. So our, we're going to put up a security gate, having people drive through, you know, a self storage facility. I don't know why anybody would ever want to drive through a self storage facility to get to a house. It, it just, but they have, they are not an isolated track. They do have walkable land on the north side of the bar and they're the ones that stated they had an easement across the bar property, not us. We didn't state that. The road is obvious. It's been there. Neighbors have said they've used it for a long time. But we didn't come up with this idea they had an easement. They said that. But they have property on the north side of the bar that is unquestionable. You can walk up the little Mickelson Trail that they put there. Before the Mickelson Trails in, it was all flat ground. They can come right down off the road where they already have access with S dot and build a road on the north face of their property. So all, all this, I, I don't know where they're coming up from this. I've, I've been building roads and different things myself for forty-five years. I showed them, like I said, at least six different routes where they can be put in. Nobody has come up and report, first of all, saying they can build there. Nobody has come up with an engineer report saying it's an isolated track and can't, because it's not. This is all conjecture going on for years and we just would like to be built, to be able to build on our own property.
Thank you, Darren. Questions?
Doing anything illegal when it comes to the planning, we're doing everything exactly the way the planning department, the codes tell us to. We're not going on anyone else's property. We're not breaking any law. We just would simply like to legally be able to build on our own property. And they've been going on with this for years now and I do not understand it. I don't understand it. Nothing they say i- i- ends up really being accurate. They have no engineering reports. Where are the reports? Where are the studies saying they can even build over where they want to build in a floodplain? They'd have to offset that somewhere else. There's no place they have to offset to let the water go, to keep it from running down into the Hill City area. They have no engineering reports even saying they can or would be allowed to build it. They have no S dot saying they can even have ingress egress anywhere. They, they, it's just conjecture tying up us from using our own legal property.
Thank you, Darren. Questions for Darren? I've got one last one for Brittany. The building permit process, when, should this be approved? How long does the building permit process take when you've got most of it already laid out for you?
Sure. So with the conditional use permits, um, once it's approved by the planning commission, there is a waiting period. So there's a thirty day waiting period, an appeal period. So once that appeal period is up, they can submit the building permit application. Once the building permit application is submitted, um, then it takes about seven to ten business days.
Okay, thank you. Everybody understand what she was saying? We haven't considered that before. Any other discussion from the audience? Yes, sir. You have to introduce yourself again, John. Thank you.
My name is John Henderson. One question on that. How, how, the appeal process? How do we go about appealing the, the appeal, the appeal?
You need to contact your attorney.
Pardon me?
You need to contact your attorney.
Money, money, money. Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion from the commission?
Mr. Chair, what I was.
Go ahead, Mike.
Starting to say is that in a sense, we're being put in a bad spot as, as, you know, a bunch of people up here to make a decision.
You haven't been napping, have you, Mike?
Nobody else has been able to make a decision on this and now we're being asked to make a decision. You know, and, and for this gentleman on Zoom not to be able to use his land is not fair. But by the same token, the Henderson setup, the way this has been going, it's not fair. And, and I'm not sure we should be making this decision.
I get the feeling that we're almost sitting here a little bit different than you. We're coming down to where somebody's got to pull the trigger and put the heat on everybody to get their heads together. And I'm beginning to see that on the horizon more than anything. That's why I wanted to ask the process for the building permit, obviously. I wanted to know how many days we've got to peel. There's all sorts of things that take over. But the board of commissioners is not going to review our action. And I wanted everyone to understand that as well. The board of commissioners certainly, uh, have taken a look at this and their own involvement in it, let's say. You know, and our own involvement as a county. So I'm not going to step in between them and I don't have access to that information. None of us do. And we, we shouldn't have in reviewing this. We're reviewing a request that a normal process, that it appears some people aren't in the same ballpark on it. For certainly legitimate reasons, both sides of the fence. Any other discussion?
Go ahead, Kevin. From my perspective, I, I really feel for the Hendersons, but I don't see where these two additional buildings are blocking access. If they have to continue that twenty foot road to the end of their new development, that's still a possibility for their lawyers to hash out. I don't see where these two new buildings are continuing to block any access. There may have to be a jog in the road. There may have to be some other thinking on that. But the locations that we see on the plans, I do not see any, um, direct path. There's been no engineering shown that does that. It's not really our place. Um, I think the property owners have the right to their storage buildings. That's why I second the motion.
One of the things, and, and you're, you're bringing it up in your conversation is that we should certainly be cognizant of. They have approval for ten right now. This makes ten and eleven, just for the record.
Eleven, twelve.
Eleven, twelve.
Eleven, twelve. Yeah, I've got the right, wrong numbers. Thanks, Brittany. So that there is one additional one, but they're also removing their caretaker's residence. Anything else? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion cured. Did you get it, Derek? Thank you. On to item number seventeen. And on this one, Jess, are you with us on Zoom? Jess?
Hi, Charlie. We're here. Larry Tuber is going to speak.
Okay, Larry's the one that's going to speak? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and start on item number seventeen.
I'll just be brief since this was continued from the previous planning commission meeting. Um, item number seventeen is conditional use permit, CU twenty-three dash zero one. To allow a multifamily dwelling on the subject property. The applicant is Cal SD LLC Tina Roberts, and she is in the audience if you have any questions. Um, the property is located at ninety-seven zero one Clarkson Road. And the lot consists, is nineteen point zero five acres. Um, and it's zoned agriculture district with a residential use. Again, this was in front of the planning commission at the last meeting and was continued to this meeting or continued, um, to readvertise. Um, so if you have any questions or additions, um, we still have the photos up here to bring up anything that you have questions for, so.
All righty, thank you. In the past, we've usually asked, uh, anybody that opposes an item to speak first and, and we allow the applicant to speak, um, second. Is anybody on the commission unhappy with that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Tuber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Larry Tuber. I reside at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Larry Tuber, I reside at nine seven zero five Clarkson Road. Uh, I have submitted to the commission an email, I'd like to submit that to the record, uh, so I won't read the entire note. It's about a page and a half, but I will summarize it briefly. Uh, uh, we oppose this CUP based on three arguments. Uh, the first is the, uh, a multifamily residence in that development is not in harmony with the neighborhood. Popular opposition of the neighbors and the adjacent developments, uh, have, uh, they've all submitted, uh, excuse, Copper Oaks has submitted a petition, uh, opposing this. Uh, I've spoken with the neighbors in Spring Canyon Development, uh, there's overwhelming opposition. Uh, Bill Colson at the last meeting spoke in opposition. Uh, so the, the standard arguments in opposition for the neighbors are, um, have been already mentioned in the past and, uh, mentioned in my email. The second, uh, argument against this CUP is the, uh, the issue of the variance versus a CUP. Uh, staff has made assumptions as to the use of this property historically without any factual evidence. Uh, and I did cite in my email two particular authorities on this. One is state authority, state statute and, uh, Pennington County ordinance and those two, uh, authorities address two questions. Number one is, was the non-conforming use present at the time the ordinance passed? And the other is, if the non-conforming use, uh, had a lapse of one year or more, uh, it would not be subject to grandfathering. Staff has suggested this property is grandfathered, therefore it doesn't need a variance, it can move directly to CUP. Uh, our argument is, based on the, uh, the, the property not being used in a non-conforming manner when the ordinance passed in oh eight and, uh, for prolonged periods of time, uh, well over one year, the property was not used in a non-conforming use. It would not be eligible for grandfathering as a CUP application and it should be, uh, go through the variance process first. So our argument is this process should be a variance, then move to CUP if the variance has been approved. Uh, if that argument is not, uh, accepted by the commission, then, uh, the CUP would fail as well as a matter of the property not being utilized in the non-conforming use at the time the ordinance passed and not being, uh, utilized in a non-conforming use for well over one year. The final argument, the third argument, is the water supply to this multifamily residence has not been settled. Uh, Spring Canyon Water Company is a private water company. We have in our bylaws, a very clear bylaw that states that the water share will be provided to a principal residence. It's the opinion of many people in our development, uh, as well as some people that have been, uh, served in the water company, that a multifamily dwelling, meaning as sanctioned by the commission that would add additional addresses, legal addresses to a single-platted lot, which is essentially what's going on here, uh, that would not be entitled to a water share and therefore is, does not have a water supply. Now, to backstop that, on March thirtieth, we have a special meeting of the Spring Canyon Water Company to address bylaw proposals, which, uh, we believe will pass overwhelmingly as we've done a straw poll. And those bylaws will identify what is a multifamily and that being additional legal addresses, which is part of the stipulation in CUP. And that a multifamily is not entitled to any more than one water share and those additional addresses are not entitled to water. And, uh, if the commission does by chance pass the CUP, uh, that we have a, uh, come into compliance clause in the bylaw that, that that multifamily, if it's granted a CUP today, that after the thirtieth, it will have thirty days to come into compliance with the new bylaw, which means it will not be entitled to a water share to those additional addresses. And, uh, the third, uh, the fourth element would be that, uh, the, uh, the water company does have options to vote for additional water shares, but that would require not just a board action, but a two-thirds majority of the water company. So to summarize that last argument, staff has reported that water supply is to this unit. And the fact is that the water supply to a multifamily unit, more than one address, is not assured and will likely not be, uh, provided. Now, that's the end of my statement, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Jess, did you intend to add anything to that?
No, I do not, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Tuber? Okay, Christine, did you wanna speak? Are you going to speak in your behalf today?
Tina.
Tina, sorry, thinking of something else, apologize, thank you Tina.
Good morning, Tina Roberts, uh, Cal SD LLC and this is my private residence. Um, the reason that I'm here and the reason that we're here in front of you is because Larry Tuber, when he owned the home, did not get the proper permitting for what I purchased, um, and that's simply why we're here. So, uh, I'm just looking to get my building permits paid for, the four thousand plus dollar fees in, um, penalty for the building permits he didn't take out and I'm just trying to live in my house, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else here to speak on that, the matter?
I'd have a question for Mr. Tuber. Why did you not take out building permits for the additions you added?
Ma'am, uh, this is Larry Tuber, uh, those additions were done in, uh, the early two thousands, two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand. Those additions were built by contractors. I signed a building contract, they built those buildings. Uh, I had no information, I had no involvement in the permitting process. I had no idea what they were doing in terms of engineering and that sort of thing. I was provided a drawing, uh, of the proposed additions and those two additions were built and the contractors were responsible for that. So I was not aware that, of the building permit status. Now, I would point out a couple of things. Uh, over the years, I've owned that house for thirty years, I have had, uh, assessment increases every year based on the buildings and there was never mentioned to me at any time that there was no building permits or any sort of a documentation equalization despite them being out, doing inspections and assessing that property. Uh, uh, the, uh, as I said, I had, uh, I had no knowledge as to what, uh, the contractors did or did not do. Now, going back twenty-three years, I don't, I, I think everyone would agree, uh, that the building permit process in the county was a little slacker than it is today. Uh, uh, that, that's all I can say, I had no knowledge, it was a building contractor's responsibility. Why they didn't do it, I have no idea, but certainly the county had knowledge that those structures were there. So there was no nefarious intent, there was no intent to deceive, uh, there was nothing like that. But, uh, the, the building permits really aren't even relevant to this issue. The relevant issue is we have a single-family dwelling, uh, at the end of a long single-road egress with a two thousand and eight ordinance that states there'll be no more dwellings in a single-road egress. And we have a state and a county law that says if you are not in compliance at the time, uh, of the, or if you are not involved in a non-conforming use at the time the ordinance passes, you are not eligible for grandfathering. And it also states that if you have a lapse of time of one year or more after the ordinance passes, assuming that you are non-conforming use at the time the ordinance passed and if you have one year of non-conforming use after that time, you are again, as a matter of law, not eligible for grandfathering. So my argument.
Mr. Tuber, can I interrupt you, this is Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. You keep bringing up legal non-conforming, this property is not legal non-conforming, that's why she has to get the permit. I think you might be confused about that.
No, I don't think, I've talked to counsel as well and clearly we have two elements in a CUP. We have configuration of property and we have use of property. This property was not configured as a multifamily in oh eight, it went for many years not configured as multifamily.
So, so you, you did the addition in two thousand and one, our building permit process has been in place since nineteen ninety-four. So you didn't get a building permit and so this property is not grandfathered. If you would have built this prior to nineteen ninety-four without a building permit, then it would have been grandfathered. But this property, the way that it is built, is not grandfathered because it is after our building permit process and all of our ordinances went into place.
Well, what?
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with that.
I'm, I'm gonna interject here, we're not gonna get into discussing legal ups and downs and matters on that. Uh, one, I want, I wanna get a motion on the floor before we go on with, with any more conversation in regards to specifics on this property. We're dealing with a request at this point in time that is a conditional use permit twenty-three oh one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move to approve CU twenty-three dash oh one.
Second, alright, the floor is open for discussion. Okay. Anyone like to weigh in with some discussion?
The way I see it is, this is a way to bring this property into compliance. If there's water issues or other legal issues there that prevent anybody else from being able to use that multifamily designation, that's really not, um, that's between the homeowner and, and legal counselor, whatever needs to be there. Um, for us to approve the conditional use permit just allows Ms. Robert, or Ms. Roberts, right?
Roberts.
To become compliant with our current zoning, um, and permitting laws.
Anyone else? One of the things that concerns me, uh, and I have a lot of empathy for what Tina has gone through on this. And there's a lot of issues in historical matters on the property. Simple word is complex. And to justify my supporting a CUP that talks about multifamily. I, if you take all that out of it, I would have looked at and viewed at this certainly totally different in regards to the forty units, in regards to the location, in regards to the history of the property, that sort of thing. I don't believe there's another multifamily out there, is there? So, I, I mean, we're talking about dropping a CUP and approving it, we're getting in the middle of the issues in the historical matters. I just think we've, we're venturing out to, way out on a limb to try to correct something and I certainly believe it should get corrected, no question about that. But in the meantime, there's still is ways to make this place a single-family dwelling. I mean, Jason isn't here, I intended to ask him, what's, this can operate as a single-family dwelling, but it certainly, some things have got to happen and it's gonna involve some costs, correct?
Sure, and I can speak to a little bit of the last meeting since Jason isn't present. Uh, I know Ms. Roberts doesn't have any intention of renting that, um, she uses it for her family only. Um, that was one issue that was brought up, um, during that time. Um, the other option, you know, worst-case scenario, um, they could remove the kitchen from that loft area and it would go back to a single-family residence in the event that this wasn't approved. Um, I don't think Ms. Roberts wants to do that, um, and incur that additional cost on top of the cost for the building permits and the penalty fees. That's my understanding, so if I spoke out, just let me know, so.
That was mine too and, and we've allowed them, Brittany, in the past, and, and this is a number of years ago, to keep those, um, refrigerators, those stoves on the property for future requests if they wanted to do that. We never made them, take them off the property. Uh, we did make them, remove them from, uh, being operable, is that not correct?
We have made them remove.
I can think of a couple of them.
Right, they have had to remove most of the cooking devices, they've been allowed to basically keep a sink and refrigerator so it's more of a wet bar type scenario.
But, correct, but they can move them to storage on their own property is what I'm saying, they don't have to move them, they, they don't have to be off the property so that we can't see them, is what I'm saying.
Technically, they need to remove the kitchen and not make it appear in any way, shape or form because, as a resident.
Removed it from the kitchen and put it in an outbuilding, that's removing.
In the storage.
And I know of two cases where that's exactly what happened.
But, um, for this purpose, I don't think she has intent of renting it or.
I don't think so either.
In a short-term or a long-term, um, manner, so.
Anyway, that, the only reason I asked that of Brittany was because this can still be done as a single-family dwelling and let the issues and the historical matters run their course and what happens, happens. I don't think we ought to be playing, um, judicial roulette. First off, how, how do we know we're gonna come down in the appropriate position? There certainly is a, a difference of opinions here. Anyone else can weigh in and you can thump on me if you want.
You know, uh, Mr. Chair, looking at the analysis, when I first looked at this in the last meeting, I said this thing's a mess and it is. And I'm not sure that this is something we should be okay. It would almost seem to me that, uh, a neutral point would be more denying and then down the road, whatever else needs to be done is done. But for us to okay this that isn't done, I, I don't know, it doesn't, just doesn't look like a clean deal to me.
Anyone else please?
That's why we're doing it, is because it's not a clean deal, I think.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Sure, discussion's open, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Larry Tuber again. Uh, I, two, two questions or two observations. Uh, number one is the CUP, uh, is going to be applied, we have this conversation about what the intent of its use would be today. But the CUP is gonna carry with the property for quite some time and that, uh, there, there's currently an active renter in there today. Uh, so, uh, and I assume, and we can assume that if a CU is passed, uh, that, that will, there'll probably be an active renter in there in the future, especially concerning what the assessments are doing to those properties out there. Uh, and certainly going forward, uh, we can expect to be, uh, have renters if it is a multifamily. Now, the other, uh, observation is, uh, a, 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 just a question and it just, I'm not, I don't understand and maybe you all can help me through this, that we're talking about the configuration of the internal private residence of a single-family home. And I know for a fact, in this county, there are many homes that have additional stoves, refrigerators and sinks in areas other than the primary kitchen. And I, I personally think it's well beyond the authority of the government, any government agency to tell a private homeowner how many sinks, how many stoves, how many refrigerators they may have in their home and in what locations. Now, I do believe it's well within the authority of the government to tell us, direct us, authorize us how many different residences, families, people we can have in a home. Obviously, we wouldn't allow thirty people to live in that home, we wouldn't allow eight different families. So it's well within the authority of the government to identify single-family, multifamily apartment, that sort of thing. But for, I, I think we all need to step back on this issue of, uh, we're really talking about telling people that they can't have two sinks, uh, one of which, both which have stoves and refrigerators next to them? I mean, that's, that's actually ridiculous in my view. That's my comment.
Charlie, I have a question for Ms. Roberts. Um, Dr., or, Mr. Tuber just said that you have a renter in your property now, can you respond to that?
I have a caretaker on site, I have, the whole total property encompasses over a hundred and forty acres. The building was built in nineteen twenty-eight that we're talking about, the majority of it. And then there is a second parcel that has.
And then there is a second parcel that has a cabin on it that was built in 1909. These structures have to be maintained. This is a log home that has a lot of maintenance on it. So I have a caretaker in the property and their compensation is rent. What would be equivalent to rent is some of their, not all of their compensation, but some of it. And then additional, does that answer your question?
Yes, that answers my question.
Thank you.
I was just going to make the other comment. Tina Roberts, I didn't say my name, excuse me, Tina Roberts. The other comment I would make is that I, I find it ironic that Larry is opposing kitchens and sinks and stoves because the home that he lives in next door to me has multiple kitchens, sinks and stoves, I would assume, because there's two or three people living there and his mother lived in the basement and potentially even caretakers on top, on the third floor or second floor of his home.
Just so the commission understands, the sinks and the stoves relate to our definition of use and how it's written. Whether that's a good definition or not, I'm going to leave that open. But I will say that that's what it relates to. It doesn't relate to that I don't want my daughter to have two or three refrigerators or stoves in her house. It relates to the use. Any other discussion? And Jerry, can you read the motion back?
It's to approve. Moved by Burton, second by Keane to approve.
Okay. To approve per staff's recommendation 2301. And there is, excuse me. How many conditions here? My page is stuck together.
There's eight.
Very good. Any other discussion from the audience? From the commission? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Two noes, Coleman and Lewis.
No, I'm no two.
Oh, you're a no two?
Yep, I'm going to. I'd like to have a roll call just for the record, please. Jerry?
Keane?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Lewis?
No.
Burton?
Aye.
Aye.
Coleman?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Four-three. Motion carries. And number 18.
Item 18 is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the February 27th, 2023 meeting.
Good. Any questions for Brittany on that? Items from the public. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak on something? Items from the staff?
Just the staff is the building permit report for February. We are up in the number of building permits. We are down in the number of single-family homes, but we are seeing more construction of hotels, small towns, some of the recreational requirements, some of the CUP's specialty resorts, recreational resorts that were approved. We're starting to see those building permits coming into those cabins. So we are down overall from 2022 to 2023. I would venture to guess some of it had to do with the weather, those really cold times we were catching up with a lot of paperwork.
We'll see what happens when the weather finally breaks, huh? Any questions for Brittany on the building permit report? Items from the membership. Their first one is the special planning commission meeting, March 29th. It's coming up at 4:00 PM. And that again is the hearing for vacation home rental.
How are we doing the agenda at this point?
I think we ought to discuss it.
Okay.
Here's what happened, and, and just so you know, my, my first job, we are under the open meeting law and we've got to make sure that we maintain order on what is being addressed in regards to our agenda. And when we deal with the public, it's very difficult to tell the public not what they want to talk about when they step up there. They're going to address what's on the agenda, but they're also going to address what's in their own heart and mind on a topic. And I think we've got to be flexible. We're all private citizens and the first place up here is volunteers. You've got to listen to the folks that are out there that believe they're on the receiving end of what we do. And that's where we got a little hung up. But I think Kevin came up with the answer when we talked about it and reviewed it. And that's it. We still need to get across to them that there are tipping points, hot points that affect the commissioners in regards to the ordinance that's being questioned. And I think they need to know those. And we could do that without making it any more than an announcement, an acknowledgement. We could actually have it and publish it and say these things have been earmarked for discussion. So that way, if people pick it up and they go over to those and it's like, I can think of one fellow, one gentleman, and he was within the city limits. And that's another thing. Brittany has indicated there's, there still seems to hurt a lot of confusion between incorporated areas and unincorporated areas. And give me just one more of the finish on what Kevin. So that we would give those to folks, and I'm thinking the one fellow that only had the size of a lot as his question. He wanted less than one acre, no question about it. And the difficulties he'd had in his life and whatnot to get into having a vacation home rental. And that way, he can pick it up and say, now, I want to include in that the, the very topic that's a hot-button topic for you already and then elaborate on it. But he also can speak about his other issues that he needed to put on the table. And I agree with that. But we could give a list or, or make that available to the public. Go ahead.
Megan Krueger, State's Attorney's Office. I just had a thought pop into my mind. I know that we have the speaker request forms. Maybe one way that we could fix some of these issues is to have a little survey at the top of the speaker request form. Do you own a VHR? Are you a neighbor of a VHR? Is your VHR in Rapid City or in an incorporated city or in unincorporated county? Just so that way, you as the, you know, the chair, you can say, well, it looks like you're, it looks like from your, you know, your speaker request form that you don't even have a VHR in Pennington County. Because I think that you're probably right. I mean, and I don't know how much more clear I could have been to everybody back there. I said probably no less than four times, this only applies to unincorporated county and they were not getting it.
No. And we did this once before. One of the previous open hearings, we asked them to state their address along with their name and we found out several from Spearfish came down. And Lawrence County, we had a number show up from Lawrence County the, the last time we went through this. And we still took their testimony, certainly, but we knew that they were speaking from Lawrence County.
And I think that might help you guys gauge how important that person's commentary is because if they don't even have a VHR in Pennington County, they just dream of one day having maybe a VHR in Pennington County. I mean, obviously you take their public comment and, you know, you listen to it and give it its due regard, but if that person doesn't even have a VHR, if they don't even have one in Pennington County, none of these rules are going to apply to them.
And I did have one comment. I did talk to Shannon Rittberger with the Department of Equalization about some of the comments about the property values and the change in property values because of VHRs. And if the planning commission would like, either he could be at the meeting or provide some memo to that information because I think that information came up quite a bit. And I think it may be valuable just to come from actually equalization. I know they're in the midst of a lot of things right now. However, I might be able to get a quick memo from him.
Karen had an excellent suggestion before we opened the meeting the day that you guys ought to be the first thing on the agenda each time. I think it's an excellent, but to bring this forward. If you brought the, the equalization memo, something that would relate, I agree. I, I'd like to see that.
And one, one thought I had for how you guys could set up a meeting because legally you can restrict how long you allow people to speak. So one way, so that way you guys can actually get something done in one of these meetings is have the first half be public comment and the second half only be for motions. And just say, we're not taking, you know, public comment during that time. We've already taken all of our public comment. Because you, you have to let people give their public comment, but you don't have to let them talk whenever they want to. Because otherwise, these meetings aren't going to go anywhere. You're just going to be listening to public comment for six months.
I would love to see us actually take action on the one-acre lot to, so people would start looking at other things in the proposed changes.
Because once you've made a decision, there really isn't any reason to continue having conversations about it.
Other than that we have to open it for discussion, but then they are limited to speak on the motion only.
Right.
That's what Megan's referring to. Once the motion is on the table.
And I could do a little research to see, I mean, our, our statute is, is just being changed this legislative session, but my recollection is that it indicates that you can restrict reasonable, you, you just have to provide a time for public comment, but that doesn't mean that you have to let them speak on every single thing that they want to speak on. So say, for example, if you guys made a motion, you know, you took a vote and you said, we've already taken public comment on this issue. We're not going to take any further public comment on this issue. You know, if you got Gary Beth there in the back, you know, fervently raising his hand, really wanting to talk, you can say, you know, sir, we've already taken public comment on this issue. We're going to, we're going to take a vote now. And I know, Charlie, that I think that you really want to let these people talk, but if you, if you do, we're never going to get anything done. It's going to be December next year.
Well, and I think that it does need to be a, we get to a point, you know, that we have all the public hearing that's kind of maybe gone on long enough that we start talking amongst ourselves in the discussion after a motion is made or something. Because right now, all we do is listen. And sometimes I think that the community feels, well, you guys don't ever say anything. That's because it's a public hearing and we're just listening for what they have to say. But we have to get to a point where, you're right, we can knock some of those issues out. And we may have a long discussion on an issue, whether it be the one acre or not. But we may have discussion that goes on for an hour before, between our board. But then at least we can get that off the table and move on to the next one.
And certainly, you know, Charlie, you know, if, if you set it up that way where you have an hour that's solely for public comment and you have an hour that is solely for the board to make motions based on the public comment that you've received at multiple meetings at this point, you can take as much time as you need to speak amongst yourself, but that doesn't mean that you need to let every Joe Bob and Harry in the back come up here and comment on every single thing that you guys say. Because otherwise, you are never going to get through this.
Perhaps the agenda could, could state, maybe item A is, is public comment. Item B, starting at seven o'clock, or seven o'clock.
Yeah, set a, set a time.
Five o'clock. Is board discussion and motions.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I'll bounce off what Kevin was saying. The hot topic items that we had last time, I really don't need to hear any more information on them. So if we could restrict the, to new, new information and then we can possibly make motions on the items that we've already really vetted out well. Because then we can start moving down that road a little bit more. Also, to bring up the email that Byron Altman sent. I, I don't think there's, I mean, I think there were some well-thought-out things in the VHR and I don't think that this needs to be put on hold and rewritten before we make motions. But I think we can pare it down a little bit and then maybe hold these meetings for a little while until some of those motions are enacted or brought up as a draft in a new, through the committee, through.
Yeah, I mean, so the procedure of, yeah, Kevin, so the procedure of how we've done it before is typically you guys will make motions and then Brittany and I will work on those motions between the hearing that you direct us to change things and the next meeting. And then we come back with the new version in front of you at the next meeting. Because most of the time, the changes aren't that fundamental that it's going to take us months to change it. It usually takes us a couple days. Yeah.
And the way I see this is a few motions being made at this next meeting, taking that public comment, scheduling another meeting, revising that, that public comment to some of the hot points and be able to make some motions on that. And then really start looking at revising the, the item. Two or three items, you know, isn't a substantial change in that ordinance. So, you know, maybe if we go through a few meetings and then get some.
I would concur. In fact, I, just the order of things, I think the, if we're going to have motions, I think we should do them at the, the start and let's eliminate them coming back up. In other words, while you're writing and drafting, we put our motion on the table and then there will be discussion from us and from them. But what I'm seeing, one farther, and Cody came up with it. He said, actually, it's better, and he thinks it's easier to set a three-minute timer at three and a half and then we know that we've given some latitude to them. He and I were talking about this and it makes sense. And then on a rebuttal, you set it at the straight minute and a half and they're done. And that may be the way you go. Just add 30 seconds to the original one. So there's a little give and take for the person that's coming up here for the first time. But I would rather see the motions at the, the start because we have reviewed three of the topics. I think we are ready for motions on those three. Let's not hide it. Let's put it on the table first thing when we open the meeting and they're done with them. Let's go on from there.
And I've certainly, I've thought about doing it both ways. I've thought a lot about how to try to get you guys moving. I thought about, I know that sounds kind of, kind of bad. That's not how I made it. But, you know, I saw, you know, I saw this.
Public is watching.
You, you know, it's the, the slog of, you know, getting through the public comment and then you guys making decisions, you know, on that public comment. And I thought about having it at the front end. And my thought was that you're going to get people complaining, saying, well, this is the first time that I'm hearing they're already making decisions. That's, you know, not fair, whatever. It's not necessarily illegal, but it's just something to think about because I've, I mean, I've been at as many of these guys, these meetings as you guys have been and.
More, I'm sure.
More.
And I think that the public did get a, or has a bad feeling about how it was printed as the final draft. Like, we're ready to vote this thing through, you know, I got some feelings.
Could you take the word "final" off?
I can. And one question that I had, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to speak to, see if the planning commission, I think there's a lot of confusion, like they, a lot of people, this is a feeling I, I got from a lot of the comments, like this is all new. And all of a sudden, there's all these new regulations. And I'm wondering if there was some way, I'm a very visual person, to put in like a chart or something that says, these are the existing requirements, these are the proposed new requirements. Because I think it's very overwhelming where they're thinking that we, that the requirements, they're different, but they're actually in some senses, an easier process, to be honest. And I'm not getting that feeling that they're understanding that. I'm getting the feeling that they're very overwhelmed thinking that this is all coming in. And so, and I'm not sure if anyone else feels that way, but that's kind of the, the feeling that I was getting that, because I'm looking at it going, it's much, it's a much simpler process. At SPU, you come in, you check all the boxes, you got what you need, you, you know, you go on.
Not a process that's been around for 20 years is what they're thinking. We wrote this in five nights, we met, and now we ask them to accept. That's what, I agree with you.
And there's a lot of things in there that are not changed from what the already requirements are. So I'm just wondering if some kind of chart or flow chart in the beginning when Megan and I kind of give that presentation so they understand that a lot of these are already in place, these are already requirements. These, a lot of the operators are already doing a lot of these things and doing them well. We don't honestly get a lot of complaints about existing operations, operating. We may have one or two neighborhoods that, you know, are pretty watchful. But for the most part, they, for lack of better terms, kind of covet that permit and they take care of their properties because they don't want to be in front of this board, honestly, that much. They don't like us coming out every three years or two years and going through their property. They would rather just operate, to be honest. So most of the complaints we do get on VHRs are people that don't have permits. Are one, and the other one is the parking, the A T Vs and things. But I think that is an issue that's pretty overwhelming in all of the hills, irregardless of V H Rs. So.
Well, I think that's a good idea, Brittany. I mean, that's certainly something we can add, um, to our presentation at the beginning. And one thing that I was also considering adding, because there were a number of people that came up and spoke that Brittany and I looked at their properties after the fact, and there were a number of people that were coming up and speaking about an item when they themselves are out of compliance of our current ordinances. Um, so I was going to gently add a slide basically explaining, if you don't have this, this, and this, and you are currently operating a V H R outs inside of Pennington County and the incorporated areas, you are currently not in compliance with our ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, because it was very frustrating listening to some of these individuals saying, oh, well, I have a V H R on a lot that's less than one acre. This isn't fair for me. I'm like, well, currently you're not allowed to do that. So if this isn't changing what you're still not allowed to do.
You know, uh, what struck me in the last two I watched on Zoom, but it seems like the nature of the audience has changed dramatically. Uh, I expected there would be people who were in favor of restricting V H Rs. It seemed like everyone here was either an advocate or operating legally or illegally. And I think many of those operating illegally, uh, did assume that this was something new, that all of a sudden we passed a regulation and my God, do I have to be in compliance, you know? Uh, which has changed the nature of the discussion. I mean, if you look back six months or a year where you have Custer and Hill City talking about restricting dramatically and even people at Pennington County restricting dramatically, vacation home rentals, all these people, they want to reduce the acreage so they can, you know, buy houses that are on less than an acre and open up a vacation home rental. And so it seems to me the nature has changed dramatically, which makes me think, what's the point of the ordinance? If only a small percentage of people are complying and we're doing nothing to bring them into compliance. And we're not evidently, I'm, I'm not aware, we don't, we don't have policemen out banging on doors. Do we go through V R B O and say, there's an address in the county, unincorporated area, they do not have, you know, the legal status and, and, uh, if, I would say that if we're simply going to be an irritant or to, to the public, then okay. But I assume the reason for the, the ordinance is safety and security for visitors and for neighbors. Then it seems to me it's incumbent upon us to make some kind of effort to get the compliance level up. Now, I, I know that's a whole different issue, but I still think that in, in the absence of that, we, we should forget about an ordinance if we're not going to bring to bear some sense of compliance. Because I, it's, you know, I, I don't think a lot of these people operate illegally are bad operators. I think most of them are probably pretty good because V R B O says, this is how you do it. You better have this, you better have that. A lot of them want to comply, but there's a lot of things they don't do. Like evacuation, uh, plans and things of that, you know, Airbnb doesn't probably insist on those kinds of things. So I, 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 I'm in favor of V H Rs. I, and I said one time in a meeting embarrassingly so that I'd never seen one I didn't like. That was an ex, a bit of hyperbole, but I, I've always been supportive of them, but I think they ought to comply. And there ought to be some kind of regulation and enforcement process. We won't let you get away with this because you put people at risk. So.
And Jim, I think I can speak to that since, I mean, I am, I am the law. So as far as compliance goes, um, the county is currently operating on a complaint basis only. So almost all of the C U Ps that you guys actually get in front of you are actually complaints that we receive. Um, that, that's how we kind of get them to come into compliance is, well, get them in front of you guys. Um, so I mean, I would say probably 60, 70% of them are, are actually complaints that we receive, that we put them in front of you to get their actual license. Um, the process that is in place for this new ordinance is an attempt to actually try to get more people into compliance. Because you don't have to, if you follow all of the rules and regulations under, under the special permitted use, you don't have to appear in front of a board and you don't have to go to a public hearing. And you just pay your, your bill, you show proof that you're meeting all of the requirements and you get your license. That's basically the way it works. Um, the only operators that would come in front of you would be those that cannot meet the requirements or refuse to meet the requirements. Um, so those properties would come in front of you with you guys knowing that the operator is refusing to not, to not allow fires, you know? That's one of the requirements that I can think of off of the top of my head. Um, or that they don't meet, um, some of the septic safety requirements, stuff like that. So if they're not meeting those kind of baseline requirements, those are the only ones that would come in front of you. Um, so the hope is that it is easier. Um, I just think that there are a lot of people who don't realize that there are rules and they are currently not following them.
I, I don't doubt that most of them violate this.
Oh, yeah.
Unknowingly. And then when they find out they're embarrassed by it and they feel uncomfortable and then they, geez, I, if I go in there and, you know, asked to be made whole, uh, I'm going to have a terrible penalty and so forth. Uh, so I, I understand that. And as I said, I do believe most of them who operate illegally do so probably pretty competently. Because you got to keep your people happy and, you know, if they.
Jim, I've got to say that though the committee was made up of, had what, five that were directly related, related operations of
This majority.
V H Rs. And they supported, uh, compliance wholeheartedly, a hundred percent. So that was something that's written into this ordinance. But one thing I wanted to, and Megan's world is a little more structured and tidy than mine when I'm running a meeting. I've cheered in excess and Brittany and I talked about this and it's in excess of 200 meetings under open meeting law. I've had advice for over that period of time from people that said, watch out for this, uh, hole in the road. Watch out for this one. And the two main ones were certainly proper publishing of the meeting. And the second one, the most important that I always dealt with, because we actually, in some of those meetings, had three and four people that were looking for us to violate open meeting structure and law. In the septic and then one in the vacation home rental, there was a one individual. But the, that second topic is allowing the people to have their say. And that's not a tidy thing. So I caution us to get it too tightened up where we don't hear from the public and we stay longer. You wear them out. You give them their opportunity to speak, whether it bores you to death or not. And whether it takes longer or not. Because they do have a right to speak. They pay taxes. Or if we add in their address, we know they're not from here and they're not part of Pennington County's regulations, that sort of thing. So I caution that, that we can clean it up to a certain degree, but one of the things to remember and, and one of the reasons I've been asking you is because Colin, that was the example I used, he literally cornered me and said, from now on, I want to hear you say to the public during discussion, irregardless of sign up forms, everything else, I want to hear that before that vote. And I've been doing that because that was a, one of the specific things that was cited upon a, in a court about the opportunity to speak during a discussion period. Anyway, uh, that's my two cents. And, and by the way, I never got challenged. The Board of Commissioners certainly got challenged several times during the, two of the septic and whatnot during those years. Over the same thing, allowing people the, the right to speak.
So I'm going to send you guys, um, this open meetings brochure that was written by the A G's office. Um, just so that you guys can peruse through it. I know that, um, most of it is still good law. It's, it's a little old. Um, but it's, um.
Most of it's the related things that they view right now, though.
Yeah, it's 2015. Some of the statutes.
Pretty late.
Yeah, some of the statutes have changed. I know the, the operative statute changed this year, but it's not in place until July. The legislature essentially changed some language to make it very, very clear that public bodies can restrict, um, speech up to a certain point. You have to give them a meaningful opportunity, but that doesn't mean that you have to give them all of the opportunities in the world. Um, and due process is the same thing. It's essentially meaningful opportunity to speak. Um, which was my thought in terms of have them speak first, make your decision second. And then they have been given a meaningful opportunity to state their mind, um, at every single meeting, you know? Because it gets kind of hinky when you're saying, well, they had the opportunity to speak at the last meeting. They weren't here. But, um, you know, having that time there at the beginning, um, gives them the opportunity to, you know, essentially speak their piece. And if they choose not to speak during that time, then that's their choice. Um, you know, Colin, I, I, I don't know exactly what his thought was for that because I know that that's not really ever been Jay's position. Um, and Jay and I have spoke ad nauseam about open meetings.
He wrote me out a quote, in fact, just how specific it was, because we had words about it, if you'll remember, Brittany. Colin and I have met in the corner on the way out after that meeting. I happened to be just sitting in for the chairman that day. When he decided to announce it.
My guess is that there probably wasn't any, any ability for people to speak on that particular topic. But this entire meeting is about one topic. Um, and they're going to have every opportunity to speak about that topic during the public comment portion. So I, I can't really see how that would be a violation of open meetings if you guys did not allow them to speak while you're making a vote. Because even in.
No, before we made a vote, it was what he wanted to sit, we give them one last opportunity regardless of forms. And, uh, cause I've still got the copies in my, on my release that I carry. I still print them in orange.
I, I'm not for sure what case he's talking about. I, I could text him and ask him. Um, but most of the time, as long as you offer some opportunity for meaningful comment on that particular topic, there, there isn't going to be an open meetings violation. I mean, if that, if that was the rule, every single, oh, every single meeting in South Dakota would have open meetings violations, that you have to let people speak whenever they want to. I mean, that's just, that's just not how open meetings.
I was on your team. I questioned it.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
I did it instead and I've been doing it.
And I can do a little bit more research and I can send you guys this open meetings, um, law. I mean, this I know is good law. There's some statutes that have changed, but for the most part it's, it hasn't fundamentally changed that much since 2015. Um, and then I can send you guys a synopsis on the law change, um, that happened this year that will be in effect in July. Um, because I, I suppose if we keep letting people talk whatever they want, we're still going to be here in July talking about this.
Let me ask you a question. Would that hurt? What does that hurt?
Well, I mean.
Follow me?
I don't want to be here in July talking about this.
Right. But I think that people need to understand, we still have an ordinance in place that they have to follow irregardless of whether
Yeah.
this, where we're at, because where South struggles a little bit in this, um, is that you have the ones that don't understand it. And then we have C U Ps that come in in front of this commission and they're getting denied and we do have neighbors and we have situational areas and neighborhoods. So it's trying to find that balance and that understanding where, you know, we have.
But I was trying to say, if we're doing what the public wants, what is that, if that's what the public wants?
Right. If they want to talk about it, that's, I, I understand that, but I do think that there needs to be an understanding that there's already an ordinance in place.
Correct.
Um, and that, you know, these, this is the criteria to come into compliance. Um, most of the neighbors probably want them into compliance because like Commissioner Coleman had said, it has to do with, you know, do they have adequate ingress and egress? Do they have, are they meeting their Department of Health standards? Is their septic sized appropriately? Um, do they have a fire mitigation plan if they're, I mean, there's just different things that we look at, um, for all of those things.
But that's what we've added you guys to the front end to try to get the people to understand that are whether they're first timers or operators or non-operators to understand what they're looking at. I agree.
And realistically, I mean, I know that you guys have obviously noticed that most of the people that are coming up to the podium are saying, I own and operate a V H R and I think we shouldn't have any rules. But all of you have sat in meetings for C U Ps where the entire neighborhood comes out against a V H R. So all of these decisions have to be made, not just with the mind of the public that actually shows up to these meeting, but the people that you know, I mean, realistically, you're not going to show up to one of these meetings if it's not directly affecting your neighborhood. But when it does affect your neighborhood, I mean, those are your guys' constituents and your public too. So.
You know, uh, the, when this was originally passed, uh, we didn't have a V H R, uh, ordinance, but it, people came out of the woodwork, of course, and it was all primarily Silver City, but then all of a sudden there were all these people. And now we were going to revise the ordinance and they're coming out of the woodwork. I think that you ought, we ought to think about making small revisions almost every two or three years. Because I think all of a sudden we would see people, oh my God, they're changing the law and I'm not doing this, right? You know? And a lot of these people who are not in compliance would show up in curiosity and so forth. I, I sometimes think that that might motivate some of these people to come into compliance short of us going on, you know, Airbnb and sending them a nice letter saying, wouldn't you like to be in compliance with the county ordinance?
We should offer a bounty, a bounty on.
No, I'm going to throw in one thing Commissioner Drews and I were speaking about and, and it'll leave it be. Where we also don't address two other issues. If you looked at the age difference, 45 and above and 45 and below on this matter, you'd see a whole different chart in a survey of support versus opposition.
That's true.
As well as covenants versus non-covenants, and we don't even look at them.
Yeah.
So those two issues alone put swords in people's hands. So that, and that's dealing with all three changes you're talking about are the initial plus two changes. It's always been the same, those two issues. Younger people support these much more str- stringently than the older people. And covenants people oppose them much more stringently than those that don't have covenants. Thank you.
We need both constituencies.
Let's get out of here, huh?
We both.
It's getting lonesome.
Yeah.
But we've come up with, and I think the best way is they're going to open up the meeting again. I agree. You're going to introduce similar information to keep them, uh, educated. We're going to have a few new things in it. Um, the only thing we haven't decided is whether we're going to go ahead and put our motions first or second. That's, we're going to go, shall we go with their recommendation?
Why don't we go for free for all first?
Okay.
Get it out of the way and then structure it at the end.
All right. And that time limit will be in our head. Let's say, I can handle that one hour.
Yeah.
We're, we're discussing it. We're going to try to limit it to about one hour. We're not, not going to kick anybody off the stage. Okay.
So just one comment, just because some of the public did bring that up, that we took up some time. So maybe it's an hour from the time. We'll try to keep it brief, you know, five or 10 minutes.
That's a fair point.
That way, that way we're not taking up the public's time, because that was a comment last time.
You guys only, I don't think you took 10 minutes.
Well, we'll try to keep it brief again, very brief, but I, I just want them to understand that there is actually an ordinance.
I believe I looked up the clock and I don't think you took 10 minutes.
I don't even think we took five minutes.
Yeah.
It was pretty, but just, just for that sake.
I agree with that direction. Um, I did want to add, um, something about us being the moderators for the public for endless months. Um, I don't think is necessarily the right approach. If the public comes out of the woodwork and has this much vocalization about opposition or changes to the ordinance, then I think the suggestion from this body should be that then join the committee and send it back to committee for revision before it comes back to us. Um, it, it's a burden on the public and it's a burden on us to be up here repetitively in special meetings to continue to hear this for months on end. Um, I, I want to make sure I know and understand and get public input, but I also don't want to do it for the next year.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think there's some basis to, if there's things that we can move and change fairly readily, let's, let's look at those options.
If not, if there's just stuff that's coming out of the woodwork that's all over the board, maybe we suggest that they form a committee to.
The motion changes that Megan and Brittany just suggested. The motion changes that Megan and Brittany just suggested would solve some of that because at the next meeting, then we would have the in writing proposed revision. And they, we did do that on a number of committees before and it worked well.
And one thing I don't know, I I'm fairly certain that all of you are kind of aware of this, but one kind of response that came up in my mind repeatedly um, during conversations is that there actually were a majority of owner operators of V H Rs on the committees. So the committee was actually um, V H R friendly heavy. Um, so I know that that came up a number of times. I mean, you guys are always free and able to tell everybody back there that actually it was, what was the split? It was five.
To two.
Five to two.
And that one was always a kind of a floater. There was about three people served in that second spot.
Yeah, five to two and then a couple perf- well, there was the lady from um.
Well, there was the mayor. She floated back and forth and opposed and and uh strong and the lady from the Rapid City.
Yeah, her. She was neutral, essentially.
More neutral, but.
She went back and forth, but it was a five to two, like you said, again and again.
Maybe four to three on some instances, but it was definitely a majority.
Yeah, very few.
But as far, I mean, that's information that we can give to everybody is that the composition of the actual committee was this person did this, this person does this. Um, because I I am a little frustrated hearing over and over again that this is just neighbors, yeah, that it's just neighbors or it's just you guys. I mean, it really did involve the industry very heavily, um, and we did that on purpose.
Yeah, most of the recommendations actually came from the industry.
Jordan kind of helped us at the end of the meeting when he came up and said, you know.
He agreed with everything.
That you have to support uh, an ordinance operating these things. You can't let people just run amok. And he came up just to say that. That was pretty slick of him.
Well, he supported everything but the one acre.
Yeah.
But but everything else he did.
All right, we've got the format and our planning department is in charge of that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.